I think you can hear me now. Oh, and look at that. I love a problem when they're bringing out more chairs. That's a great candidate forum right there for you. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for Colorado Springs City Council District Three. I forgot to review the ground rules. I apologize. So we're going to quickly go through that. There is no applause, noise, or demonstration, or support, or non-support for any of the candidates. At the end, you may clap for all of the candidates, and volunteers are circulating for those cards, but we don't allow any videotaping or audio recording unless cleared through LWVPPR. We are streaming live on our website as well as on YouTube, and our recordings can be found at lvvppr.org. There's some tape seats right there in the middle for you. Thank you for coming. When the livestream, oh, sorry, the livestream has already joined us, so we're going to get to opening statements here with your candidates, and they get two minutes each, but welcome to our online audience as well. We appreciate you joining us, whether you're here in person or virtually. So my name is Shelley Roers. I am the spokesperson for the League of Women Voters here in the Pikes Peak region, and you are here for the Colorado Springs City Council District Three, and what a full room we have. So thank you for joining us. Thank you to our partner, Hillside Advisory Team. Shout out to you and for feeding us. We so appreciate that. We are coming to you live from the Hillside Community Center. Candidates with us tonight running for City Council District Three, they include in alphabetical order. Candidate number one is Mr. Rick Gillett. Yes, yay. Candidate number two, Mariah Lauer. Welcome. Candidate number three, Greg Thornton. Thank you, sir. And candidate number four, Brandy Williams, also joining us. Candidate number five will be on your ballot. Mr. Christopher Metzger declined our invitation to attend, so we wish him well this evening and hope he can complete those Vote 411 surveys. Candidates, if you have not done that, please complete that Vote 411 survey for the League. We appreciate that as well. It helps to educate our voters. Your moderator for tonight's forum is Mr. Chris Rudnick, the president of the Hillside Advisory Team, and I'm going to turn it over to him, and he's going to start your forum.
All right. Thank you, Shelley. Welcome, everybody. This is one of our meetings that we have every fourth Wednesday of the month. We've had them for several years here in the Hillside neighborhood. I'm proud to represent the board. We have eight active members and quite a few members that regularly do come to our meetings where we have information for the public about impactful things for the Hillside neighborhood. And we're very pleased to be hosting the Candidate Forum for District Three in the upcoming mayoral race. You try saying that. City Council. Yes, okay. Give you a little bit of a boost there for that. We are a group that is helping to support the individuals that live in the Hillside neighborhood and a lot of the 501(c)(3) organizations here. We've got a booth over up on the side. At the end of the scheduled portion of the Candidate Forum tonight, we'll have some community announcements about activities going on in the community and some announcements about some other things that we've been doing in the community, too. So without further ado, let's go ahead and we'll get started, and we're going to have the candidates in alphabetical order just give their first, their little statement, and we'll start with candidate Gillett, and followed by candidate Lauer, and candidate Thornton, and candidate Williams. Go ahead.
Thank you. Rick Gillett for running for District Three. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the League of Women Voters, Hillside Community Center. It's awesome to be here, and thank you for whoever made the chili. I only had two bowls, so. I appreciate just a little introduction about myself. I live, obviously, in this district. I have a wife. Me and my wife both own businesses in this district. We have a son who goes to elementary school in this district. I was born, my mother is a Mexican immigrant, my father raised in an orphanage in another country, and they both were able to meet, marry seven days later, and had me. So we, here I am today. I, you know, I love being here. My heart is in this part of the town. I'm a president of Peak Education, which helps bring youth, a higher, higher level of education, a higher level of post-secondary. I helped start Atlas Preparatory and sat on their board for a long time, again, just for education and bringing the education that I think the community needed and deserved, and was able to help in the formation of that. Also, wanted to say that some of the things on my agenda are safety, security, bringing, making sure that the police are prepared, adequate, trained appropriately, and have the proper force that they need. Firefighters, that they have what they need to come and help us when it's called upon. Parks and trails, making sure that we have a place for our kids to go play and a place that I can go and spend time with my son. And lastly is affordable housing. Making sure that we have places that we can move up to and places that we can move into, either when you're out of school. I'm being, okay, thank you. When my son leaves school, when my parents hopefully want to move here, I hope that there's locations where they have the ability to come in and live. So thank you very much, and I look forward to talking to you tonight.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mariah Lauer. So I have been introducing myself for a lot of these forums or interviews as somebody who has a strong background in community organizing and activism here in Colorado Springs. And I've been in a lot, involved in a lot of different things, from working with the homeless community here, working for more oversight and accountability of our police, working, you know, to support our immigrant community. But what it really means is that I have gone around and I have spoken with people in this community, and I have listened, because that is really all what this is about. This is, and that's why I want to bring that to City Council. We need city councilors. We need a local government that isn't just telling people, you know, this is how it is, and whether you, you know, this is how it's going to be whether you like it or not. We need representation that's actually seeking input from our communities and asking for answers and the things that will make our lives better. As a young person, I'm 31 years old, and I want to help this community create a new vision for what Colorado Springs could be. What could this city be like if we were really fighting to make it more affordable, to make it more accessible, to make it vibrant, to have a diversified, thriving local economy? And that is why I decided to throw my hat in the ring, because I think it's time that we have people who will bring an entirely new approach to leadership on our city council. So thank you.
I'm going to remind everybody, remember, we do not support or endorse. I'm sorry. I did a little bit of a hands-up earlier for the chili. I do apologize for that when somebody commented on the chili. So that was an expression on my part. I apologize. But just a reminder for those coming in the room, the rules, as we go throughout, from a candidate perspective, there's no endorsing or supporting, no booing, no clapping, no snapping, and we will let you clap at the end. So we do appreciate you following those rules. Thank you. Candidate, I believe, sorry. Candidate Thornton, you're next.
Hello, everybody. My name is Greg Thornton. My mic is back. So I moved here in 2013. I've lived in Virginia, Kentucky, Oklahoma, Texas, and Indonesia, been all over the world. And I moved here in 2013 because I wanted to live here. My brother has lived here since the 80s, and I visited him so many times. And one day, I was sitting on the Beltway in DC, and I moved about two miles in about an hour and a half. I called him up and said, I'm ready to come. I was an empty nester, so I came here in 2013. First thing I did, trying to be active in the community, was I kind of protested against a strawberry field swap. Didn't win that, but next thing I was doing, I was working on trying to get Drake closed, because I just think having a coal, coal plant in the middle of your downtown isn't a good look for any town, and it wasn't good for the environment either. After that, I joined the Parks Board about six or seven years ago. I've been on the Parks Board. I'm on the West Side Community Center Working Committee, so I have an affinity for the West, the community centers here. You guys are doing a great job here. I live right across the street from Memorial Park. This is my area. I ride my bike around here and stuff like that. But I'm running because I love this city. I would love to get your support. I look forward to talking to you about all of this over the next hour or so. I got 30 seconds. So let's see. I guess I'll, I'll give you the 30 seconds. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brandy Williams. We had a forum yesterday on KOAA TV, and you're just staring into a bunch of screens. And I told everybody, tonight's going to be better. There's an audience, there's interaction, there's people you know, there's friendly faces. This is a better place. It's always nice to have relatives in the audience, so I won't call them out by name, but thank you for being here. I'm Brandy Williams. I was born and raised in Colorado Springs. My dad was born and raised in Colorado Springs, and my grandfather was born and raised in Colorado Springs. So we've been here for about 125 years, which I know seems like a really long time, but it's great that our city's been thriving that whole time. I grew up and graduated from Rampart High School. I had the best childhood ever. My dad was a cattle rancher, so while you did have to work seven days a week, I always had a horse, so it was kind of a fun trade-off. But my mom said, mamas don't let their babies grow up to be cowboys. So I went off, got my engineering degree, came back, and wanted to work and serve and live in the community that I grew up in. I had the luxury of running for City Council back in 2011 and got elected at large. One of the biggest accomplishments while I was there is really helping the Memorial Health System, build it to where it is today, bringing more access to the community to health care. We only had the two hospitals system at that point in time, and now UC Health has infused a ton of money into our community. And I want to do what I can to take us to the next level. For District Three, as usual, public safety is very important all parts of the district. No one's going to be left out, and I'm sure Yolanda will give me any tidbits if I need it on where to focus on, but public safety, potholes, and just really being present for the community.
All right. Thank you, guys. It was a great introduction. Let's, let's launch right into some questions here. And we're going to start with, we're going to rotate, starting the questions. So we've got a nice, neat little chart here that I'm going to be crossing off to keep track here. So candidate Williams, if you could start with the answer to this question. Campaign finance transparency is critical to public trust. We've seen cases where large donations come from individuals, sometimes in amounts just below reporting threshold, or funnelled through family members or associates. How can voters be sure that candidates aren't using pass-through donations to hide developer contributions? And will each of you commit to refusing donations from individuals or entities that have a financial stake in city development decisions? So one minute on this one.
That's a very well thought-out question. There were very few donations that I ever received in $19 increments. The smallest one I ever got was $20, and you still have to report that one. This is my fourth time running for office, and my first time was my favorite, because that's the time I got elected. And my biggest donor was my mother. So the entire time I was in office, people would say, oh, you're bought and paid for. You're absolutely right. I am bought and paid for by my mom, who doesn't even live in the city. So I've, I've done this more than once. All of my donations are transparent, and nobody's funneling money through my mom. And actually, for this one, I said, Mom, just please sit this one out. Like, let's just bring the community together and see how it goes. But for the most part, my mom's been my biggest donor over all of my years in campaigning.
Okay. Candidate Thornton.
Brandy, I'd say, take some money from your mom. It's a good luck charm.
Is this thing, okay, now it's working. So this is very important to me. You'll see on my signs and my cards, I take no developer donations. I take no dark money. If I don't know the person, well, I shouldn't say that. I do take it from strangers, but, I mean, strangers aren't affecting me either. But I think transparency in government is vital. Not knowing who's paying for your candidates is, is, I just don't know how you can do that. So I am not taking any of those kind of donations. I think if you're taking donations from developers, and they want to come for council and want to talk about annexation, and you've taken $7,500 from or whatever, you should recuse yourself. But that's why then half, seven out of the nine council members wouldn't even be able to do anything with any developer in front of them. So that's why we should all not take developer donations. So I'd call on all candidates to do that.
All right. Thank you. Candidate Lauer.
So I wholeheartedly agree. I am absolutely not going to be accepting any money from developers or from corporate interests. In fact, I have a proven track record of taking on developer interests and actually winning. In 2023, I was the campaign manager on the Vote No on 2A campaign, which, if you don't remember, that would have provided almost $5 million in Tabor funds to build a new police training facility. We won that campaign. It was a grassroots campaign with $3,000. And the Vote Yes campaign had over $200,000 that they got, mostly from developers and business interests in this city. So I am wholeheartedly going to be up there. I'm, all of my funds are from grassroots supporters. And I will also say that, like, once I'm in office, this is something that's incredibly important to me, because I have previously worked in the nonprofit world, and I know just how much, like, Colorado Springs truly is the Wild West when it comes to campaign finance and campaign, like, regulation. And it's absolutely something that we need to address right now.
Thank you for your specific question. For City Council, you're correct. There is no cap for how much we can get. Someone could write us a check for a million dollars. Nobody should accept that check, obviously. But just saying, there is no cap for specific reporting that we can't go above. I would personally say no. For, there was something floated for a $250 donation, and I don't believe I even could recuse myself, as I have school board members that have wrote me checks over that. I have financial advisors. I have people that I know personally in the community, people that, I have nonprofit members that have donated more than that. It's just not something that you can regulate as far as you have to recuse yourself for each individual type of entity that's giving you money. I do want to be honest and say I have. You will see a $1,000 donation right now in my, for, in my report from a wonderful woman named Susan, and she would be considered a developer, but she's also an amazing friend and a city, and a city leader. So just to, just to say no, no, I would not support that.
Thank you, candidates. Next question. If a developer comes to council to present his plan for a housing project, what questions? Sure. That's, that's, if a developer comes and submits a plan for a housing project, it can be anybody. What questions would you ask him? And give three examples. And the reason I'm asking is that council never questions a developer or asks for a marketing plan or a business plan. Developers tend to overpromise and underperform. Candidate Thornton, could you start this one, please?
Hello? I guess I'd ask for their marketing plan and their development plan. I'd also ask when they decide, when they would choose to start developing. I know the Carmen Line was recently passed, and they're not planning on doing anything for five years. I actually think that should not have been approved. If I get on City Council, I will ask, I will work for the de-annexation of Carmen Line. We don't need it. We don't know if we're going to have enough people there. We don't know if we're going to lose Space Command. The infrastructure costs would be astronomical. There's, I mean, so if someone was coming, I'd ask all these questions to make sure that we actually need it. What, where are they getting their numbers for population? Peterson can house a lot of people out there also. So, I mean, on the Parks Board, I'm known as the rogue member, which I always thought was, well, I'll get back to that.
I think candidate Lauer.
So I will actually say that I don't think it's about what questions I will be asking developers. I think we need to be requiring developers to create a community benefits agreement with every single community, especially historic ones, where they might be creating new developments. That way, community, the communities actually have the ability to have real input on the impact it has. That way, we can make sure we are not creating displacement of historic communities. We are not leading to increased gentification in Colorado Springs. So I think it's not so much what I'm going to be asking developers, but what are we going to be requiring of all, of all developers for every big development project in this city?
All right. Candidate Gillett.
Gillett. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I think I'd be asking, what type of homes are going into what areas? Meaning, are we being appropriate with where we're placing housing? I know there's a glut of affordable housing that's needed on the West Side. We have to make it where teachers, where firefighters, where police officers can live and live responsibly. We also need regular housing out here, places where people can move and move up into. We don't need to overfill a place with just affordable housing, because this is where we say we want it. We need to make a positive community for everybody. Right now, we're in an unfortunate upside-down pyramid, where 80% of, 85% of the homes on the market are above $700,000. But 85% of the people looking to shop need a home $350,000 or less. So as a developer, I'm going to ask, when, when are we building the homes that people need? When are we building the homes that people need to be put into, so that people can have lives and people can live the way that they deserve to live?
All right. Thank you, candidate Williams.
Thank you. I'll pull, there it goes. Because I have the luxury of having lived here my whole life, I've seen our economy go up and down, and up and down, and up and down. And you mentioned the fact that it's underperforming. A lot of those things are economic changes and problems that we've had in this community. In the 80s, we had a lot of foreclosures. In the late 2000s, we had the Great Recession, that actually left a lot of lots just sitting there. So while they may have had the best of intentions, and people were building as fast as they possibly could, the flip of a switch, all of a sudden, the economy has turned in a direction you didn't prepare. But one thing I would love to have are neighborhood meetings, making sure the communities are having part of the conversation, because I've found in governance, the more that you can get information out to the community, the more it's understood, and the less rumors start spreading about what's, what could or could not be happening, as opposed to what's actually happening.
Okay. Thank you. Here's a question from attendees tonight, and this one, two minutes on this one. Give us some concrete examples of what you would support for improving affordable housing issues, and, and be specific. Candidate Lauer.
So I would say what I just spoke about, community benefits agreements, I think will go a very long way to ensuring that communities can stay affordable for people who've been living there for generations. I think we also really need to be expanding renters' rights. So some of the specific ways that we could do that is be providing free legal representation for anybody in eviction proceedings. This is a really crucial way that we can prevent homelessness from even happening, and, and just making sure that, yeah, people don't, don't end up on the streets. I also think we, something specific we need to do, it's a little bit wonky, but we need to prevent the use of algorithmic software by landlords, which are, which, which they are using to price fix and raise rents in this city, and make them spiral out of control. I think we also need to adopt, I mean, this goes into homelessness, but it's all connected, right? So I think we need to be adopting a housing-first policy. So this means that we don't expect people who are experiencing homelessness to somehow maintain a job, or maintain their mental health, or all of these other issues while they are living on the streets. It means that we put them in housing with wraparound services, like vocational training, substance abuse support, mental health support, and that way, we can actually make sure that people are, we don't have the homelessness problem that we do. I also think we need to be looking to actually building social housing and removing the profit motive from housing altogether. We have got to stop treating something that is an essential human need as a commodity. Everybody should have housing regardless of their wealth, or race, or any, any other factor. Everybody uses housing, and so I think we need to actually treat that as, treat it as a human right. And social housing is a huge way that we could do that, while also building a better local economy.
All right. Thank you. Candidate Gillett.
Thank you. Affordable housing, I think, directly as a city councilman, what you can do immediately, what you can effect immediately is a two-pronged approach. First, you can go to the city. You can look at permitting fees, licensing fees, land tax fees. You can come back and say, can you subsidize some of these fees specifically for affordable housing programs? Again, that is a, that's an approach that any city councilperson can go and quickly start to study and start to ask for some of these projects to help get them started. Second, really a combined effort. Just get everybody together, all the councilmen, the city, the mayor's office, go to the state and ask for defective construction to be repealed, where we can no longer build some of the housing that people need. My first ever house I was able to live in and own was a condo. We can't build those anymore, because developers are now disincentivized to go out and build condo structures. It pains me that, again, knowing that this is the easy access, knowing this is the easy way for me to go in and build equity, we cannot do that anymore, or you have to go into a place that might be dilapidated, and the HOA dues are so high that you really just can't afford to live there anymore. That takes it out of affordable housing, because we can no longer do that. So again, first-pronged approach, go to the city, ask for the subsidies, ask for some of those licensing, these fees, these permitting fees to be taken away. Second, go and fight the state. Go and fight the fact that we need to build certain structures that people can live in affordably.
All right. Thank you, candidate. Candidate Williams.
The first house I bought in Colorado Springs is about $150,000. I'm pretty sure you can't even find a house on the market right now for $150,000. And the interest rate was 7%. That's okay if you have a $150,000 house. But now, in 2025, if you want a starter home, it's between $300,000 and $400,000 and a 7% interest rate. How did we get here? Inflation, more inflation, more prices going up post-COVID, and we definitely have a dilemma we've never had before, which really is creating partnerships. One of the things I know that's happened in our community is Pastor Ben actually took it upon himself to join the development community and figure out how to do housing. I went to the planning conference this year up north of Denver, and communities all over the state are thinking more outside of the box than they ever have before. Finding land, finding dollars, putting them together and getting them done. So this is going to take partnerships. It's going to take meetings. Nobody likes meetings. I love meetings, as long as they're productive. But it really is going to take leadership, bringing people together, and looking at those parcels of land that we have in the city, and seeing if we can partner with churches and nonprofits and everything that we can to do to really bring more housing and bring it at a, not that $150,000 rate. If we get that lucky, that would be great, but at least something that people can get into and start building equity.
All right. Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
First house I bought was $60,000. So I'm just aging myself here. But let me, I want to finish what I talked about last time, but the Parks Director called me her rogue advisor, and she told me she meant it as a, as a compliment. I looked up the word rogue, and there's not many good words that are synonyms with the word rogue, but there is one, and it's independent. So you can count on me being independent when I'm representing you. So just wanted to put that in there. Regarding affordable housing, I recently walked five miles all around downtown with a developer, well, he was a landowner, I guess, and there are like 16 blocks that are practically empty, or they just have, they're vacant, or they have not much on the property. So we got a lot of room to grow there. I think we need to build smaller homes, obviously. The average household size is little over two, it's less than three. We don't need to be building these four-bedroom, five-bedroom, three-bath houses like they're doing, that are going for $700,000, or median $500,000. So I, in the builders, on KOAA yesterday, there was a builder saying he is not making much money on houses right now. So he probably needs to be building the smaller houses. Now granted, they make more on the bigger ones, but they need to make them, build them smaller, so that people can afford them. And then regarding just about affordability, we need to make sure these developers do not, well, they should have more affordable housing when they build these buildings. That skyscraper they want to put downtown, there's only 40 units that are going to be supposedly affordable. And I used this line before, but these 40 units is 10% of the units, and they're so small, you could cook eggs while you're laying in bed. and they're so small, you could cook eggs while you're laying in bed.
All right, thank you. Let's go back to minutes for this next question. Would you vote for a project that would physically harm citizens of Colorado Springs? For a reason we ask is that the council approved an amphitheater on a superfund site, and also a development in a known landslide area. Candidate Gillett.
I don't know how you can answer that with anyway, but no. I don't know if I need two minutes. True physical impairment, true physical deficit, absolutely 100% unequivocally, no. As the Chair of the Pike Peak Regional Building Department, I voted to make sure that that stuff did not happen. That doesn't change, that doesn't, that isn't removed from you because I don't, I don't even know a reason that you would vote yes, so I'll just stop there.
Okay. Candidate Williams.
As an engineer, I've actually worked on projects all throughout the city, and I will give a caveat with this. Sometimes you don't actually know that the land is going to move until the torrential rains comes. So I would say, given the information that I have at the time, yes, we will make sure that everything is physically safe. But there are parts of this city, given increased rainfall, places will start to move that have never moved before. So I will do as much due diligence as I possibly can to make sure it's safe. It's nice to have friends in the industry. But there could be things that happen after the fact, and I just want everyone to be aware that, you know, I would never knowingly do it, but we have the ability to have parts of the city collapse due to mines and due to poor soils.
All right, thank you. Candidate Thornton.
I'll say no also. I was at Gold Hill Mesa today, and, no, I don't think you should be putting any amphitheater there. I think that's what they got proposed, is that they want to put amphitheater there also. I don't know if any, if you all are aware of that. So I'm not really happy about that, but I'm building more homes there. I mean, it doesn't make sense to build on that, that superfight, superfund area. Doesn't make sense to build on steep slopes. So I don't know how you could say you'd ever do that. But yeah, we do need to be wary of the same thing happening in that area that is happening up north. Because if they're playing music at Gold Hill Mesa and it's three thousand, three thousand-seat amphitheater, you're going to hear it downtown, you're going to hear it in OCC, you're going to hear it at Stratton Open Space.
All right, thank you. Kennedy Lauer.
Yeah, so I would say, I would agree, I'd like, obviously, no. If we have actually done our due diligence, which I think is ultimately the problem, is we are, the city is not really doing its due diligence to make sure that we are not moving forward on projects that are going to cause physical harm to our residents. And this is also why it's so important that we have real meaningful opportunities for community inputs. Because nobody knows our communities better than us. I mean, I live right by Old Colorado City, I know there's lead in my soil. I know that we should be doing more to like environmentally remediate the area. So yeah, if we have properly, really consulted with communities, and then we receive feedback that unequivocally it's going to cause physical harm, it's a very easy vote no.
All right, I'm going to steal the mic here. Candidates, take a deep breath, take a glass of that water real quick. We're just going to make a, just a really quick short break. This is to kind of give you a little bit about the League. For those of you who have come in, if you don't know anything about us, the League is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. Our local League has been active since 1937. You do not need to be a woman to be a League member, you just need to be civically engaged, right? So that's us. Our mission specifically, it's back here on, on these signs behind us, it is to empower voters and defend democracy. We give you the education, we give you the information, what you do with it is up to you. We also believe in voting in every election, which is why we're here today. So thank you for that, candidates. Thank you again to our sponsors tonight, the Hillside Advisory Team. Again, thank you for feeding us. If you would please save Shelley and Chris, I don't know if you ate or anything, I'd like a bowl of that chili, please, if you wouldn't mind saving me a bowl. I would appreciate that. And also, we have a couple of elected officials here with us tonight. I believe we have City Councilmember Yolanda Avila sitting here in the front row. Thank you for being here. You've also got, you've also got D-11 School Board Member Julie Ott there in the back running our tech. So thank you both for being here. That's all I have for you right now. And candidates, you ready for your next question? I believe the first candidate on this one is that Candidate Williams will be first to answer on your next question.
All right, so our, our next question is, do you think the taxpayers of Colorado Springs should pay for the parking garage under one of the skyscrapers, or any skyscraper proposed for the downtown area? Reason being asking is, council has already approved. Yes, one minute, sorry.
So this is sort of a retroactive question, as opposed to, so this has already happened. I would say with most of the things that come before council, it's best to do your homework, do your due diligence, look at everything that's been presented as far as how we got to this point. I can't sit here and say I know which particular tax bucket that's coming from, meaning the taxpayers. So I would have to look at that first and foremost. As a practice, I don't know that we'd want that to happen over and over again, unless it's going to be a public facility, and then it's used as that as well. But again, Councilman, Councilmember Avila would have more of the details than I would as far as how we got from here to there. But with every single project, I think it's going to be really incumbent upon the council member to look at all the pieces that are being put together. And again, we shouldn't be making that a, a practice. But if there was a reason that council felt that this was needed, then I'm being told to stop. So yeah, complicated question, love it.
Candidate Thornton.
It is a good question, I've never thought of it. So there's going to be 400 units supposedly in this building. All those 400, maybe they're not going to have parking spots, but they're going to be parking there. So I guess it's going to be several row, or floors of, of the 28 or so that's proposed, which will be parking. I, I mean, who, who gets the money? Are we getting, is the city getting the money? Or is, I mean, the developers, I think, yeah, there's just too many unanswered questions, I don't know. I, I would like to think that the developers would build the entire building, and then, I don't know, then we can work out who gets the money from the parking after the fact. Well, before we build it, of course. I got any seconds?
Seven.
Thank you very much.
Kennedy Lauer.
I think with any proposal or project like this, the, the first question we need to be asking is, well, who's going to be profiting from it? Because if whoever is going to be profiting from it, who should be paying for it? Because otherwise, it just looks like it is a corporate handout at the expense of taxpayers. And so, yeah, I would say in this specific instance, if the developer is profiting from that parking garage, then they absolutely should be paying for it rather than the city.
Okay. Candidate Gillett.
Thank you. Whoever wrote this question, thank you. True politics, we could have blamed the people that came before us. And I, I'm going to be honest, I don't know that vote. I haven't heard that, how this went as far as does it go to developers, does it go to people? As a councilperson, your job is to represent the people and make sure the people are safe, and everything comes back to them. Sometimes you have to build a house so somebody can live in, sometimes you have to build a parking structure. I want to just preface that, not knowing the situations or the finances of a specific parking garage, but as a city councilperson, you need to make sure that if someone wants to go town, downtown, and shop at my wife's women's clothing store, I want someone to be able to park there and be able to, to, to commute and do it in a responsible way. So you're looking at, you're looking at bringing something to everything, not just one individual project. There's lots that go into a city, parking is one of them. So I just hope that this is for the city, and I'll look more into it. And whoever wrote that, if you'd like to talk to me afterwards, I would welcome the conversation.
Okay. This is a, a short one, 30 seconds. Who have you been endorsed by so far? Candidate Thornton.
My mom. My brother. Friends. I don't have any, I guess, high-name endorsements, but I'm proud of the endorsements I have.
Okay. Kennedy Lauer.
I have been endorsed by the Pike's Peak Library Workers United. I've been endorsed by New Era Colorado Action Fund, which is a youth advocacy organization, by Colorado Springs DSA, by Beautiful Colorado Springs, which does people-centered planning. Sorry, I think I'm forgetting one, but, yeah. There might be a few more, you could see them on my website. And expecting a few more to come.
All right. Candidate Gillett.
Mike Edmonds, former Dean of CC, civic leader, just all-around amazing person. Served on many boards with him. Carlos Jimenez, CEO of Peak Education. Again, someone that has been just very powerful in this community. Melissa Stockwell, she's the first female to ever lose a limb in US combat history. Personal friend, just amazing woman. Last would be Susan Petit, and a true friend, a true, someone who cares about the community, and someone who cares about each individual person, and cares about them even though they might not have met them.
Kennedy Williams.
Hey. As we all know, I'm endorsed by my mother. My father passed away, but I'm sure he'd endorse me too. Bill Hibble, former Mayor John Sothers, former District Three Councilmember Richard Skorman, former District, or current District Three Councilmember Michelle Talarico, former President of City Council Scott Hente, former Pro Tem of City Council Jan Martin, former Mayor Mary Lou McPease, and the Police Protective Association, and former Senator Bernie Herpen.
Okay. Next question, back up to a minute. Middle Shook's Run is new to District Three after redistricting. What do you know about this area, and how do you plan to represent new areas in D-Three? Candidate Lauer.
Well, I will say, I know that this is like a really, I think it's a great example of the kind of communities that we want to be replicating or encouraging within Colorado Springs and within the district. I know that there's like a thriving local arts, murals, walk, it's one of the more walkable areas of this city, more bikeable areas of this city. And it seems like it's a community where people are like really connected to each other. I've been told by people who live in Shook's Run that there's like a giant neighbor group chat, which is like honestly just so precious, and I think it's something we need to really be doing a lot more of. But I plan, especially communities like Hillside is also a recent addition to District Three, as well as Shook's Run, actually seeking input and actively really trying to reach out to the community in the ways that I have always done as a community organizer.
All right, thank you. Candidate Gillett.
Sorry, can you please repeat that?
Sure. Middle Shook's Run is new to District Three after redistricting. What do you know about this area, and how do you plan to represent new areas in D-Three?
Amazing family neighborhood. Park, I was able to meet with Brett Haley of Parks, and we really, I kind of did a deep dive into Shook's as far as how we can spend some money bringing playground equipment, just bringing a friendly neighborhood. But she really spoke with me and how impressed she was with how the neighbors kind of gather, how the neighbors, you, you get a true neighborhood feeling there. That's something I love, I, I believe I had that, have that around me, we just don't get a call on anything. But with Shook's Run, I love to be, love it in District Three, really appreciative, and everything that I've heard about Shook's Run, again, impresses me, so thank you.
Okay. Candidate Williams.
So I didn't want to take up too much of my two minutes of time, but, well, no, I meant the beginning. In my, in my opening remarks. So when I was elected to City Council, I was elect, I was elected at large. One of the questions I've actually received in the last month is, how would you treat being a district representative versus an at-large representative? And even when I was at large, I did my best to answer all the questions that came to me. I know the district representatives are busy, so for whatever reason, I actually spent a lot of time in Middle Shook's Run and Shook's Run, and making sure that we were bringing resources and funds to that part of the city. So on complete accident, I probably know more than most, but I have no problem taking that in because at one point in time, I represented all of City of Colorado Springs. So I'm very comfortable with that.
All right, thank you. Next question, another minute question.
Middle Shook's Run is my stomping grounds. I ride my bike a lot. I've ridden the Legacy Loop, I've ridden all around Shook's Run. I've picked up trash all over Shook's Run. I, I've been to Good Neighbors, I can tell you that is a great neighborhood, that park right next to Good Neighbors, which I believe is on, I'm going to say Rossatch, or Weber. No. But that was, that was done primarily off of neighbors putting their money into it. And I was a part of that with the Parks Board. We were just, we helped them out as much as they can, but they raised most of the money. So I look forward to representing Middle Shook's Run, top of Shook's Run, bottom of Shook's Run, and every place west of it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Next question. Do you have ideas for better traffic movement across our city? One minute. Candidate Gillett.
Wow, great question. Yes, I do have ideas for better traffic movement. There's, there's a master plan that was in Colorado Springs put forth that could obviously be revisited. The master plan already says where certain roads need to go, where lanes, how we're going to expand. It's not something that you need to overanalyze as far as what could be done because it's there. Now, knowing that, knowing that the movements are different to people, knowing that we're hoping are going to more bikes, going to more walking, we need to give more access to the alternate forms of, of transportation. But again, as far as if we're going to talk cars, we have a plan, we have a master plan. It really is our job to kind of follow how the city was designed. As far as alternative forms of, of transportation, we can do a lot to expand that. Me and my son love riding our bikes downtown. We really appreciate the bike lanes that have been added. The one thing I wish is that the bike lanes would have been connected. At one point, we're on Tahoe, at one point, we're on Weber, on one point, we're on Cascade. But at some point, I have to get my son from one to the other. I'd like everybody to be able to do that safely.
All right, thank you. Candidate Williams.
Across is a relative term. Did they define it more than just across? Can I assume east to west, or?
Yes, ma'am, you can assume east-west.
Yes. So had I been born 20 years earlier, the city would look a lot different if I got the luxury of being the traffic engineer for the city. One thing that we've done is we've grown up as Colorado Springs without a really good east-west route. And one thing that has consistently come across over and over again is, we don't want Constitution to change. So if I could wave a magic wand and go back in time, Constitution would look completely different. But this is what we have today. So right now, we've really got Woodman, so let's focus on that. And we've got the MLK bypass. And then in the middle, I think we just need to do little incremental changes to Platt and UNTA, just to make them a little bit more efficient. But we're not really going to get that big, huge east-west corridor. So that's, the community has spoken when it comes to Constitution.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Thornton.
So I was on the Mayor Civic Leadership Fellowship a couple of years ago, and we all had to come up with some idea at the end of it, at the end of a year. And my group talked about having a multimodal system. Our buses kind of go, you got to go like an hour one way and an hour, I mean, it's just crazy. It's not, it doesn't work well. So one of the things we thought about was that if, if you can combine like scooters, bike, bike ride, bus, have the same card where you can use them all. So you can maybe ride your bike one place, get on a bus somewhere, scooter to work, and vice, and do all that, all on the same card. But yeah, we got to keep on, we're doing a good job with the connectivity with the bike lanes, I think. I've ridden all the way out to, well, past Powers. You can do it. I ride out to Sand Creek. So I mean, we're, we're getting better, but yes, we do have challenges east-west. I've thought about bringing back the shuttle on Platt, but.
All right, thank you. Candidate Lauer.
So yeah, I completely agree that we need like better multimodal transportation. I would say, I think like a solution that we I would say, I think like a solution that we could really be adopting in the short term, that I think would have a huge impact on transportation and traffic congestion would be having BRT, or Bus Rapid Transit. So, these are dedicated bus lanes that are for buses only, obviously, and, you know, the event of something like an evacuation, then that would be used. But that way, it makes sure, it would ensure that buses are not caught in traffic, that they are able to go quickly, because I think that is one of the big frustrations with bus users. Obviously, you know, increasing their, they're changing their routes, making them better, you know, suited to fit the needs of residents, but I think having BRT would make a really big impact and really incentivize people to actually want to use our buses, because if it means you get to basically skip all the traffic, why, why wouldn't you?
Okay, thank you. And this would be, would this be the last question? Okay, so it's the last question before closing statements, one minute on this one. How would each of you work specifically with the Hillside neighborhood? We've got a lot of new facilities being built around us, or renovated around us, and our neighborhood's feeling a little bit squeezed. Candidate Williams.
I think, as I mentioned before, I love meetings, I love productive meetings, and I love open dialogue, so I would make myself available. One of the things I've seen is a pile of questions that just keeps coming up, which is fabulous, but I also know that this is our last question, and then we have closing statements. So, after this, if you still have additional questions, I'm available to answer those. But continuing the open communication, working with you, you seem to be a good point of contact. Shelley's done a good job to put all this together, so I think just keeping the communication and the conversations open. One thing I described when I was on City Council is, is we get to see the movie, we get to see all the intricate details, but by the time it makes it out to the community, you see the trailer, and you don't get to see all the pieces that got to that decision that was made. So, anytime I can bring the movie to the community, I'm more than willing to do that, so.
Okay, thank you. Kennedy Thornton.
I'd love to talk to whoever wrote that question, because I didn't know we were getting squeezed. But, and that's my air, but I do live close to here, I'm over here a lot. I actually pick up trash at, all the time, over around Prospect Lake and Memorial Park. So, I'd love to learn more about the squeezing. I think this neighborhood is like on a rebirth, doing great things. I know it was voted like one of the best cities in America a few years ago, it's got that sign that says whatever, I don't know if you guys know what I'm talking about, but it's, it says something like greatest city?
All-American.
All-American city, thank you. So, and they got the Hillside Garden concerts, which are awesome. So, I think this is a, this is a part of town that's really booming and doing well. So, if there is too much growth, or whatever's causing the squeezing, I'd love to learn about it. So, and when I said shuttle, I meant the trolley down Platt. So, I always come back and fix my mistakes.
Kennedy Lauer.
Yeah, so I'm really glad this question came up, because I know how much Hillside in particular has been historically really disenfranchised as a community, you know, in various ways, as it's been a food desert, there's been a lot of issues. And it's actually the reason that I specifically chose Hillside as the first community that we came around and started knocking doors, to talk to voters. And I plan to continue that even once I'm elected, to go out regularly and literally just talk to people at their doors and hear directly from them their concerns, their hopes, their fears, their dreams. So, yeah, it's definitely something I will continue to do, and I am really glad that this forum was here today, because I think Hillside is such an amazing example of the kind of communities that we really want to be building, because I see people who are so connected to each other and who really care about their neighbors and care about Hillside, so.
All right, thank you. Candidate Gillett.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, you know, being able to work at Atlas Prep, you get to be and talk to thousands of the youth around the area. And then here, here, you know, I'm gonna talk kind of a perspective from them. They feel like, sometimes it's hard to get out, meaning it's hard to get to other places. Sometimes they don't have the amenities that they feel like they want. One of the things, we, I was able to get around 300 kids over the rodeo last year, we sent buses, and we bussed everyone all over, and we gave them an experience that's probably strange, but an experience that was fun. We got them to have popcorn, we got them to, you know, ride bulls, it was not real bulls, mechanical bulls, excuse me. But we just gave them an experience that was fun. The squeeze can mean something different for many people, and I just want to say, for the youth, the people that are really coming up, our next generation, I want to make sure that they just feel supported and they get to have a place at the table. They get to communicate exactly what they want, and it's my job to help them deliver that. So, whatever the squeeze means to each person, I just want to be able and be able to listen at least.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody. Now, this is the end of our audience-driven questions. We'll now ask each candidate to finish with their closing statements. We'll go in reverse order from the opening statements. So, Candidate Williams, you're first with your one-minute closing statement, followed by Candidate Thornton, and Candidate Lauer, ending with Candidate Gillett.
I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I know it's a little bit smaller crowd than was at the birthday party, but I appreciate each of you coming out tonight. We live in the greatest country in the world. We live in a place where I could grow up, I could run for office, and I could get elected, and I could serve my community. To me, it's a little heartbreaking, you know, 50, 60 years ago, if I were born, I couldn't even get a credit card. So, to accomplish what I've accomplished in my hometown really warms my heart. To see all of you here tonight, and really know, just as, you know, my new relation, Councilmember Avila, you can be here, too, someday. Like, the four of us are up here really to show you what can be accomplished in your hometown and in your city. I'm asking for your vote, for Councilmember, for District 3. I have been there, done that, which means my learning curve is a little bit smaller. And when you have questions, I most likely will have answers and have the relationships to get this community where it needs to be as fast as possible. It's been my honor to serve in the past, it'll be my honor to serve in the future. And I'm pretty sure you said this was a one-minute closing statement, but she just told me I still have a minute. So, yeah, so I don't, I just, I didn't want to get the timer in trouble, and I didn't want to get more time than everybody else. Thank you.
You were short on your opening, so you got extra on your closing, so good job. So, I just figured I'd tell you a little bit about myself. I have had a 30-year career in the financial services industry. I think I was a financial advisor, a head trader, a branch manager. I think I can bring some fiscal acumen to the position. I will ask the tough questions when I need to ask them. I have a 30-year-old daughter and a 27-year-old son. I love this area, like I said, I lived every, all kinds of different places, but I chose to live here, because it's so beautiful. I want to keep this place beautiful. I want to, I don't know how people feel about the building height requirements, I am for them, because I think there are great cities out there, like Paris, DC, that I used to live near, San Jose, Portland, Bali, Singapore, they all got height requirements now, so that's something to think of. I want to do this, because I think I'd be a good counselor for you, and if you're wondering, my website is www.gregforcos.com. Thank you.
So, I really just want to start by thanking you all for being here, because it shows how much you really do care about your community and your city. So, I'm running because I'm somebody who really understands what it's like to struggle. Being a working-class person, I know how many of us are really frustrated and angry with the status quo, we don't feel like we are being adequately represented on City Council. And we deserve more. We deserve a city counselor in District 3, who will not only, you know, who won't just paternalistically tell us, like, I know what you really need. We deserve somebody who's gonna fight to kick down doors, so that you can advocate for yourself and for your neighbors, your family, your coworkers, your friends, to make this city better, and for it to actually fit and be fighting to meet the needs that you have and the desires and the vision that you have for what this city can be. So, I hope you will vote for me, Mariah Lauer, for People Power.
All right. Thank you. I, you know, I started with a brief history of my parents, my family. I'd like to, you know, give you the rest of my victory story. My parents decided that they were very young, they got married. We also, at a very young age, looked homeless for about a year and a half. Going through that, and going through and having community and having people that are involved to help my family out of a situation, is something that instills a sense of service that nothing else can really teach you. Nothing else can really teach you that you don't have money, but you have time. You have time to give back, and you have time to serve everybody around you. I think that's my rallying cry around my run, is the service, the service that I want to give back to my community, and how I want to uplift everybody around me. I said something earlier about Susan saying she loves people regardless of she met them. The reason I said that is because that's me. That's who I am to my core, and I will love you and I will fight for you regardless of, if I've ever met you, I care who you are. And that's just because what's been instilled with me just since I was a young baby. So, thank you very much, Rick Gillett, running for City Council, District 3.
Thank you, candidates. Can we get a round of applause for your candidates, please? We so appreciate you guys. It takes a, it takes a lot to put your name on that ballot, so thank you so much, we appreciate it, and we look forward to voting for one of you come your spring election, no, excuse me, April 1st. Thank you again, this wraps up our live and virtual forum. Just a reminder, we do have a pile of questions here. If your question did not get asked, please ask the candidates, that, we encourage you that. And if they're not here tonight, you can also email them. And this is put on by our voter service team, so if you're a League member, can you please raise your hand, we want to recognize you. Thank you, but League members, you guys are amazing. I am always in great company, I appreciate you so much. Again, this wraps up our live and virtual forum for Colorado Springs City Council, District 3. We thank you for being an active and engaged citizen. Our recordings are always available on our League of Women Voters website at lvvpr.org, or on our YouTube channel, under Live, and on the League's Making Democracy Work podcast. So, thank you again. Candidates, please stay for a brief picture, and then you can, they're all yours to ask your questions, so thank you very much.